For Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. We're starting a couple of minutes late because we were interviewing candidates for the open position on select boards. So please, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Thank you all for coming and thank you to the very excellent candidates who put their name in to be considered for the position of select board member. So. Why don't we take that up at the top? We will. I should mention that select board member Sharon Russell is on the phone. We have a full compliment Kurt Hathaway, Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, and Don Chaffee. So we are all here. And is there a motion as a result of our interview with the candidates for the open position of select board?
I would move that we appoint Matt Getty to the vacant select board position.
Second.
Sorry, Sharon.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to appoint Matt Getty to the position of a select board member. Any discussion?
No, this town is very fortunate to have as many really super qualified candidates. And it's not an easy decision to make when you wish you had more vacancies because you'd like to have these people participating. So, you know, I would certainly encourage all of the candidates that put their name forward this evening that we interviewed to keep up your interest in the town because we need those kind of people on this board. And thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Don. That was well said. I think we all feel the same way. Yeah. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor of appointing Matt Getty, please say aye.
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 Sharon?
Aye. Aye.
I'll make it unanimous. So congratulations, Mr. Getty, and our heartfelt thanks to the other three of you who put your names in and stay in touch and stay connected with the town because we appreciate your your help and your input. Now, we have a motion as to timing of the appointments which we have worked out. So, Joe?
All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept Jim Schultz's resignation at 11:50 on the 31st of March. And we appoint Don Chaffee to the position of doing for tax collector at 11:51. And we appoint Matt Getty to the position vacated by Don to the select board at 11:52 PM on the 31st.
Motion's made and seconded to and thirded to do the appointments as scheduled. Any discussion? And your purpose is?
No April Fools.
So no one will be on April Fool's Day. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Sharon?
Aye.
Motion carries. And so you all know March 31st is Friday. She is on. She's zooming.
I was going to say if she was here, she could have administered the oath to Matt. We'd have six members. I guess you'll have to get it after Friday. Actually, technically, I guess that's appropriate.
Yeah, we should probably wait.
And, you know, and my letter, my formal letter will be into Bill.
We can't have six board members at this. Right.
Okay, let's go through some of the top of the agenda items. Minutes of the March 14th meeting are in your package. Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes suspended. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Sharon, you okay with the minutes?
Aye.
I heard an aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, minutes are accepted as printed. I'm going to circulate them. There you go, Don. All right, board member announcements. Anything from the board? Any announcements you want to? Just that the April, well, this is happening on April 1st. That's the deadline for circle articles. Please get them into Janelle Fagnon, if you have something you wish to write about. Okay, Don, announcements.
Someone else.
There was no's from that direction, so you're on. Yep.
First of all, I would like to I would like to thank every department head and all the staff in this building. And my fellow board members, it's been an honor and a privilege to sit in this chair that I've loved since 1970. And this will be my swan song. This will be the last time I ever sit in a select board chair. And I I value it. And I want to thank my fellow board members. It's been a pleasure working with you this year and the greatness of this town as even expressed by candidates for the position of select board that interviewed this evening. It does not happen in a vacuum. It happens because there are members sitting in these chairs who have a love and a concern that doesn't end at the end of a board meeting. Goes on through the two week cycle between board meetings on weekends, in the evening, at the transfer station or the dump, as I like to call it, because that gets me in trouble with Mr. Delvinieri. But this town is very, very fortunate to have people in all positions. Department heads that are sitting here and and those that are not, those that are on on the Zoom call who are of a very superior quality as is shown by the operation of this town, very, very well managed town. And it's been a privilege to be a part of it. The other announcement that I have is that Mary had asked me to give a very brief, and it will be brief, synopsis of the work that I have done over the last two or three weeks with Jim Schultz, our present tax collector. And I've spent considerable amount of time with Jim and very productive. He's very well organized, much more than I am usually in terms of data entry in the digital world, but but I have gotten quite an education from him. And it's been it's been a very productive time. And I thank Jim. You on here right now?
He is, yeah.
Yes, you on here, Jim?
Yes, he is.
And and I would express my sincere thanks because he's given of his time probably 15, 20 hours in any case. And we will spend some more time prior to prior to the May date, but March 31st, it'll be me on the on the network account and the town accounts. So thank you very much, Jim, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with you on this. And thank you, Mary.
Well, thank you, Don. It was a very nice transition. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank you very much for your service to the town. Yes, thank you. So with
I was offered cake, but I had to buy.
All right.
Like chocolate. I don't usually share. Okay, so carefully crafted agenda, and I think we're gonna toss it aside with the approval of the select boards so that we can move on to the the town's annual MS4 report. I believe we have Carrie on for us, Bill?
Yes, we do. It's Carrie Garvey, I believe.
Yes.
She is there.
Hi, Carrie. I'm here. Thank you.
And so give us a little brief update about why we're visiting with you tonight and what you are doing for us.
Sure. So I work for Watershed Consulting and we help manage the MS4 permit for the town, which is a requirement from the Vermont DEC. And the annual report is due every year on April 1st. So essentially, that's a summary of everything that has been done in 2022. And some amount of planning for what will be done in the next year, but that's not set in stone. They don't hold you to, you know, exactly what you say in the report, but a useful planning document nonetheless. So the highlights of the past year were to complete one stormwater design to the 60% design level. And minimum control measure number three involves illicit discharge detection and elimination. And we completed an illicit discharge study for the town. So 21 outfalls were inspected in 2022. And in the materials we sent along is the summary report, including the 21 outfalls that were inspected, eight that were sampled because they had flows and dry weather, which are sometimes associated with non-stormwater discharges, which is why we investigate them. And five of those were somewhat suspect in one way or another. Again, that's detailed in the report, but I'm happy to go into any of that if there are questions.
Carrie, I do have the files available if anything you'd like shown.
Okay, great. Yeah, if there are any questions, Bill can can share the report and we can go over it. But, you know, however, however in depth you want me to go, I'm happy to. So, like I said, there were five that were suspect. And we did some sampling to try to figure out what was going on at those outfalls. And our proposed plan is to follow up with those this summer. Because this time of year, you know, in the wet weather and in the winter, it's not really feasible to do that work. And in the spring, there's high groundwater. So a lot of these outfalls are flowing just because of the groundwater, which isn't a concern. But then in the summer, if they're still flowing, we we want to make sure that there isn't anything coming out of those outfalls that shouldn't be. So that that's kind of the broad overview and and we have all those materials queued up if we want to look at anything or if there are any questions.
Well, the only thing we have in front of us is D, which is your letter of November 7th, 2022, which lists the work that has been that shows compliance with the MS4 permit. So why don't we queue up what you have and you can kind of briefly walk us through, please?
Sure. Bill, did you want to start with just the annual report workbook?
Yes, that is.
I was in the MS4 submitted folder.
That's the Excel sheet?
Mm hmm. It's called Rutland Town Animal Report Workbook 2022.
Is that the right one?
Yes, it is. Thank you. So
pretty teeny for us, so go ahead and tell us.
Sure. So this is the template that is provided by the DEC that each MS4 community needs to submit. Again, the deadline is April 1st for that. And basically, it goes through all of the minimum control measures that are required for all of the MS4 communities. So some of the materials that are in here have been from previous years. And then we've added the 2022 updates. So that illicit discharge study that I was just talking about is that MM number three. And I don't know how well you can read it, but we have the materials that we'll provide as attachments to the DEC called out in the applicable fields. So we have a map of the outfalls we visited. The 21 outfalls that were inspected and they ask for sort of that numeric status of monitoring activities. So those numbers that I mentioned, the 21 outfalls inspected, eight dry weather samples taken, and five potential discharges detected are all listed under the measurable goals. And then we've referenced the IDDE, which is illicit discharge, summary reports and the recommendation that those five outfalls are revisited in the summer of 2023. So that is all under MM number three.
And you'll be the, your company will be revisiting those.
That's the plan.
Okay.
And then if we scroll down a little bit on the worksheet here, we see MM number four, which is related to construction sites, stormwater runoff control. So previously, the town had already adopted an ordinance so that is just noted there. And the same as previous years since the ordinance was adopted. So that's related to making sure there aren't any issues when when sites are constructed. And the town adopted requirements for those sites. And likewise, for the post-construction stormwater management for new development and redevelopment, which is MM number five, we've noted about the ordinance being adopted. Again, none of this is is new from the previous years where we've submitted the annual reports. So I think we can continue down. And then the pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So these are related to things like street sweeping and catch basin cleaning and inspections and the stormwater treatment practices. So there is an additional table where we detail each of the proposed stormwater treatment practices that were developed for both the phosphorus control plan and the flow restoration plan for Moonbrook. So those are are the planning documents that we're working from there. And here we we note in the applicable tab, since this is just the summary that the 60% design was completed for the retrofit of the Windmere project. And the plan is to advance a design for another practice in 2023. And yeah, so that those are kind of the overview of each of those MM minimum control measures for the town. I'm not sure if you want to look at any of the other more in-depth documents.
Are we in, are we in compliance with state requirements at this point?
Yes. Yep. So the the big ones to be aware of are the flow restoration plan and phosphorus control plan in terms of stormwater. The deadlines for those are are quite a few years out at this point, but it is important to advance some of those projects because they do take a while to design and implement. And of course, want to make sure that we're within that deadline for those those master planning documents.
Don, you had a question?
Are we, you know, I don't, I don't mean to cut you short, Carrie. I appreciate, you know, I was kind of in the weeds on a little bit of this stuff, but it's educational. But are we looking for a motion on the 22.5? Is that?
Let's, Bill, what is, we have D in front of us.
Yes, so the the need for tonight is to authorize, it was a single, single signature. So you just need to be authorized to sign for the submission of the annual report. No money tonight. Just
I would make that motion. I just it looked like a proposal that was going to require 22.5 on our part.
What you have there is the scope of services. That's the list of all the things that are the goals for for this year, but that's those are goals for this year. This is follow up from last year.
Okay. So the appropriate motion would be for approval of the report to the state of Vermont. Correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, Bill, did you cut out?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you heard me. That is correct. That is, that is what you need tonight is the motion to approve that annual report.
Make a motion to approve the annual report and to authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the annual report and to authorize the chair to sign. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. So anything else that we need to discuss tonight on this issue? Sorry.
No, I think that's it, Carrie. I think that's everything you needed, right?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
So I'll get that up to you tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate your time on this. I'm assuming Bill, wait a minute. Nope, it looks like that. Is that the one? Okay.
There should be a copy in that green folder.
Well, Bill, you changed the color of the folder.
Did. I did. New folder. The other guy was getting a little worn out.
He didn't want the girl to have the pink folder, okay, you know?
But he didn't give you the blue one, though. So you're all right.
Okay. I'm signing. So let's go back through the agenda. Let's see where we are. I've added a couple of things and rearranged things. If you don't like it, select board members, just tell me and we can, we can try it for a while. And if it doesn't work, we'll go back to what does work. A couple of things, I have added a section called update from the select board chair, so I wanted to make you aware of just a few things. First of all, I had coffee with Mayor Matt Dunjust this morning. There was no particular agenda. We wanted to get to know each other a little bit and we tossed around some concerns that each of us had for our own municipalities and ways that we might be able to work together in the future, including some cost sharing perhaps. But nothing, you know, obviously, we would each need to go back to our legislative bodies. So we were basically opening the conversation today. Some of the things that came up, as you might expect, were the policing situation on the south end of town. The 1% tax, the city will be instituting their 1% tax probably in October. And we know because we share a zip code and some parts of it that we're going to have to keep an eye on the state revenues. So we have both agreed to do that. There are housing concerns. I think we've heard some of that tonight. And the mayor is concerned about housing in the area, as are we. And there are also grant opportunities and we discussed the possibility as we used to, we have done with West Rutland, applied for some grants. And if the opportunity arises, we might be entering into grant applications with the city on appropriate measures. But these are all just opening the conversation and getting to know each other a little bit. So we're going to try and meet on a regular basis and I will let you know what's on the mayor's mind. And I'm sure he will share that information as well. Committee assignments, your sheets are there. In the back, it's it's F in your packet. Appointee, where it says appointee now, it's going to be Matt Getty serving on these committees. If you don't like your committee assignment, you can, well, so I'll do it this way, and you can find somebody on another committee to swap with you. Feel free. Just let me know. Otherwise, you're stuck with it.
Keep the comments you don't hear when I have my phone.
We're, we're going back to the committee system for a couple of reasons. One, I think a couple of select board members on each department is going to facilitate the exchange of information a little better. And if from these meetings, there will be minutes generated, thank you very much, Bill. And that gives us items to put on the agenda and may shorten some of the discussions that we would otherwise be having at our main select board meeting. But that's my hope and we'll see how that works. The Rutland Town seniors met this past week and they are very interested. So I'm looking at you two here because you're on the building committee. They are very interested in what might be occurring downstairs as a renovation of our meeting space. They want in on it. They want to be able to have a meeting space because it's getting difficult to find a restaurant with sufficient capacity. We're up to like 29 or 30 people there. So and they also have ideas, micro, for activities that they might like to see in the future. So toss that to Sharon and the rec committee, Matt. So you'll be hopefully working on those things. I had an extensive meeting with Kevin Brown or or a phone conversation to catch up on some things. And so I'm, you know, fairly good position there. Kevin Brown is our town attorney and I did meet briefly with our police chief and fire chief to talk about making sure we get information out and people to the polls to vote on the fire, the public service building in May. So that conversation has started. Okay, that's what I had. Do we have any questions from the floor or public comments? We'll start first with folks in the room. Other than select board members, she'll get your chance. Hey, anybody on the phone?
Yep.
Questions from the, okay, so we'll proceed with our agenda. Chris Clark, town fire chief.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris.
Not much to report tonight. Last two weeks been a little busier than usually. I've eight calls. Nothing really else much to report. I would like to have a fire committee meeting. I'm sorry I missed to Mary put on the the team there, but if we could make a date sometime, I would appreciate it. The team there, but if we could make a date sometime, I would appreciate it.
Okay, fire committee is Sharon Russell and Mary Ashcroft. So, um, we'll huddle with you and pick a date and set up a meeting.
All right, perfect. That's all I got. I don't have anything else to report.
I, I'd like to say something. I, I just want to say something. I got to tell you, Chris, and the rest of the fire department, you guys really rock. Thank you for the flowers. They're beautiful. Um, you know, I'm getting spoiled here. But I like it. Don't stop. I like it.
Well, you're welcome.
All right, any other, uh, questions or comments of our fire chief? All right, thank you, Chris. Marcia Choffee, Tom Lister.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marcia.
Just a couple of things here. Um, Lister's office, uh, running as it should be. Uh, anxious to be able to get, um, the position, the open position of Lister filled. And on the same theme as the select board, we've had some excellent candidates apply for the position. Um, which I was very happy to see. So I will be speaking with each one of the candidates and hopefully before April eleventh, come back with a recommendation to the board. Um, an update on BT Pi. Transition from the NIMRIC system to BT Pi. Has, uh, kind of stalled. Um, we've, they've encountered a few glitches that, uh, they didn't anticipate. And consequently, um, we have not been able to veri- verify homestead declarations. And all of the, uh, transfers that I've put in have not been uploaded into BT Pi. For sales validation for the equalization study. Um, other than that, we continue to take classes and just hope that, uh, you know, we'll be able to get everything. Up and running at least sometime after April first, which is a deadline for us. Um, on another note, um, Taylor has been doing an excellent job in doing the PTTRs. And we are caught up, there's nothing hanging out there, so we should be good to go for the April first deadline. Um, let's see, what else have I got here? Um, all the.
Talk about the, uh.
H four eighty bill, yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, my wife asked me for some.
Okay.
Some legislative advice, so.
You've been, you've been monitoring this anyway, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
Okay, go ahead.
I've tried, uh, you know, to, to keep abreast and, and it's difficult because there's, there's a million, there are a million things going on in the legislature. Right now, and it's, uh, as Mary could attest as well, having been there. Um, it's hard to keep abreast of other issues other than your own committee because your committee is fully engaged. Well, the appraisal and taxing and appraisal. Bill four eighty, uh, that was originated in the Ways and Means Committee. Uh, was passed out of Ways and Means, uh, but because it had a two point five million. Uh, continuing assessment annually, uh, uh, it obviously had to go to appropriation, so. In the appropriations committee, um, Representative. Uh, Jim Harrison, who was the, uh, Killington re- representative. And closest to us, really, I mean, in this region, uh, proposed an amendment in committee. Because of the tax implications of this whole bill. Uh, pretty severe, that he would, uh, uh, he would like to see. He would like to see a report from the tax department as of December, as to some of the ramifications and questions that appropriations had. On implementation of this. Since it involves the whole listing community and, uh, and the BCA. Uh, and appeals and so, and appraisals. Uh, so he put an amendment on to change the implementation date from the, from twenty-five. To twenty-six. So it was already out one year for us, and now it's two years old. And that bill passed. Out of committee with that amendment and it is going to be up on the floor of the House. Is it tomorrow, Marcia?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow for first reading, so. If it passes with the amendment. We'll have two years to think about it and a report generated to the tax department and I'm sure. Uh, I'm sure we'll get a lot more information. The one thing that's not clear in the legislation, the way it's written. Because they've done away with the eight dollar fee in this bill. Appraisals will be done by the state instead of local communities. Even statistical ones will be done by the state. And they would up the fee from a dollar to two dollars for something or other. But it was not clear what is going, first of all, it wasn't clear what's going to happen to the money that's already in. The hands of communities right now that has been paid over six, seven, eight, nine years for reappraisal. We have two hundred thousand in our account. It's also not clear. What is actually going to happen on July first? When these notices are supposed to come out of the hundred and sixty-some-odd communities that need reappraisal. Since we're four years behind already. Appraisal companies are four years behind, so it wouldn't be able to be implemented for four years and. There's a two-year deadline now in this bill, so. It's pretty nebulous what's going to happen on July first, whether, whether our listing department is going to be responsible. For starting to implement a town-wide reappraisal. I, I don't believe so, but I don't know. That confused the whole listing, uh, situation even more. And I didn't want her to have to worry about all that stuff, so. That's the way that stands right now.
Um, that, um, that eight fifty per parcel. That was strictly, uh, mandated to go to reappraisal and that had to be put in a separate account, which we have. In a money market account. The dollar per parcel is now going to be up to two dollars a parcel. Which, uh, still isn't, isn't, um, you know. Very lucrative, but, um, I, I did hear on one of the, um, testimonies that I listened to for Ways and Means. That they are thinking that whatever money is in the town's. Um, you know, coppers for reappraisal would remain with the town to be used for other things.
I would vote for that.
Since we've got over two hundred thousand dollars in that account.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so Marcia, back to the, um. I, I understand that some of the candidates that have applied for the administrative position with the listers. Are also interested in being appointed, um, to the open Lister position.
That's correct.
So, we should probably, um, set a time so we're not, uh, so that we have a chance to all visit together. Um, is that agreeable to you? I mean, you make the determination on who you hire, but we have to decide who to appoint, so.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, the other departments, you know, Carrie did all the interviews and made a recommendation. And I'm sure that Dave Sears is doing the same thing with a recommendation, so I don't know why.
The difference is, we've also got to appoint somebody.
Correct.
Talked about is, uh, if Marcia gets, does the interviews for the administrative position, which you do the hiring, Marcia, not us.
Right.
Um, and you picked a candidate, you want to work with you in that position. And then the position of Lister will have to be appointed by the board, so.
Correct.
We figured you should pick who you want to work in your office as a administrator with you. They wouldn't necessarily, they won't be an additional listener, then we would appoint, um, somebody to fill the vacant listed position. I think that would be the best way. That gives you the opportunity to hire who you would like to have in, does that work for you, Marcia?
Um, well, at the moment, there's only one Lister position open and, um, I was thinking of concentrating on filling that position. Um, because we're coming into crunch time where I'm going to need somebody to go out in the field to do. Uh, visits so that we can, you know, hopefully get the grand list out there in time. Um, as far as the administrative, um. I, I kind of think that I would look, want to put that on the back burner until we hire a Lister to see. You know, how, how that's going to go.
Okay, in that case, the select board has to make the Lister, um, determinations. So what's the deadline for applying for that open Lister spot? Okay, it's Monday.
Right.
So, we'll have to set up some interviews after that. So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to work with you on this one, Marcia, but we have two different roles here, so. Okay, we'll see who applies by Monday and then, um, we'll be back in touch to, um, work with you on interviews. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the update and all of the work you're putting in. Anything else, Don? Okay, um, Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Hi there.
Hi, Carrie.
Um, not much to report tonight, just a reminder that, um, this weekend is the deadline for dogs. And, um, I will accept, uh, the, uh, dog relicensing until Monday, the third. Because the first is over the weekend. But that's all I have.
Okay, um, so Carrie, we, I'm not sure that we talked about it at our last meeting. Because we were still, but what's the deadline for people who are interested in running? For either the open Lister position or the open select board position on the May twenty-third meeting. And the tax collector, sorry, yeah, thank you.
What I think you're asking is, um, signatures to be put on the ballot is what you're asking.
Names to be put on the ballot.
Uh, April seventeenth, I believe is a Monday, and that's the date that we've determined is the latest date you can put your petition in.
Okay.
So we're going to have three positions, so we're going to appoint the Lister for a very short period of time.
Yes. So we've got three, three positions plus town grand juror. Uh, I know people are pretty excited about that, and what was the other one?
If you're interested, we got till seventeenth of April to get your petition.
And do you have petitions available? Petitions are available on the Secretary of State's website. And I'm sure Carrie would help you if you came in to get one from the town office, right?
Yes, I have copies at the office as well.
Okay. Any questions from select board members of our town clerk and treasurer? Oh, it's quiet, um. There, Carrie has raised an issue or, or a reminder of issues that we need to deal with on, um. The Finance and Personnel Committee, so, um, I'm on that and Matt Getty is on that. So, we need to see if we can set up a meeting with you and deal with those issues, okay?
That's great, thank you.
Welcome. All right, Barbara Noise Pulling.
Good evening, hi. Good evening. Um, you have, um, I believe in front of you. Or, um, at your disposal, the, the permit tracking ordinance, but I was going to suggest. Um, since the planning commission is close of, close to at least sending to. To the, uh, town attorney, a couple of other ordinances. That maybe we take them all, or you take them all at once. So that would be the permit tracking ordinance, the subdivision ordinance that we, um, updated. And possibly the, uh, short-term rentals ordinance. So in, instead of stringing out some public hearings, um, I'm just wondering if, if you want to kind of bundle those together. When, uh, when we finish up our work and the town attorney finishes up work on those.
Okay, so, does the town attorney have all three at this?
No, no, they, no, he, um, he doesn't, he, he has looked at the permit tracking ordinance. Uh, a while ago, uh, but he has not seen at all the subdivision or the short-term rentals.
Okay.
So, yeah.
What's the feeling of the board about taking all of these as a package? Pros, cons?
That's a lot to choke on, really, I mean, this, uh. The permit tracking ordinance is quite extensive and the, uh. The.
The short-term rental.
Short-term rental is. Pretty heavy as well.
We're not going to be ready for that until probably July or August.
Well, you're going to have a public hearing on that anyway, or the planning commissions. Yep.
I think so.
Okay, that's down under action needed, um, it is B, item B.
So if we're good and we've done everything that we need to move to adopt it, okay, yes, so I would move that we adopt the.
Yeah, it's, it's an amendment of the existing ordinance, okay, all right, is there a second to that? Motion is made in the second discussion. This is on the permit tracking ordinance, which was in your packet. Discussion, Sharon?
Yep.
No? Anyone wish to discuss this? If not, are you, oh, sorry, Kurt, go ahead.
So. I, I don't know, I have, I have concerns with this entire ordinance. I've never liked it, um. Uh, essentially, it's a. It's a zoning but not zoning wannabe building permit and that's just not what we need in this town. Um, with, there's a lot of very vague. Very vague. I don't know, definitions and, and things about it that I just can't get on board with, I mean. We were trying, we're calling a building, you know, including an awning, so you can't put a. Awning on your porch that's bigger than ten by ten without getting a permit from the town. And then, I mean, is, is it like a pop-up canopy tent? I mean, you can put a pop-up tent up that's twelve by twelve, that's going to be bigger for this. You know, bigger than what this permit calls for. You're getting a permit, put a pop-up tent up on your lawn. I mean, because it says whether the building is permanent or not in nature, so we talk about tents. You know, that's, that's kind of. It seems very vague in some of that stuff and then you get back to like the definition of structure. And, I mean, you're talking about mobile homes and trailers, well, is that storage trailer? If I have a storage trailer more than a hundred square feet on my property, do I need a permit from the town to have that? If I have a storage trailer more than a hundred square feet on my property, do I need a permit from the town to have that there? You know, sitting in my driveway? Or if I say, well, a car dealership's on the south end of town, want to put a Conex box out behind their. Building to store some car parts in for a short period of time, are they getting a permit from the town to put a. Conex box on their property, and if they want to move that Conex box. Do they need to reapply for a permit with a different map on where it's going to be on their property? It's just.
So I think. I think, Kurt, your concerns might be valid, except for if you look at section four. On, it's on page two. Permit required, and you know, at, at the, at the expense of boring people by reading it, I will read it so that it's on the record. No building or structure of any kind, whether business or residential, including but not limited to houses, outbuildings, retail and or commercial structures. As well as an enlargement or addition that increases the footprint of an existing structure shall hereafter be constructed. Or install within the limits of the town of Rutland unless an informational permit. Is first obtained from the town permit officer. And that word. Basically controls this whole document, I think, that's the way I interpret it. This whole document is a document which gives the listers. The authority to have the information that they need in order to properly value. The properties in the town of Rutland. Because it's only an informational permit, the information is used by the listing department. To send their people or to go out and do an inspection. And then upgrade the lister card to reflect the, the value of the property, that's basically all this is.
If that's the case, Don, why are we, why are we including non-permanent structures? Because non-permanent structures aren't taxable.
I don't know. I can't answer that.
Trying to figure out with this.
I, I have to agree, or, I, I just seem, I, I'm, I can't say I agree with this, nope.
And then.
Nope.
And then when you get to the enforcement aspect, I mean, this was adopted in two thousand eight, are we going to go back and. Find people five hundred dollars a day back to two thousand eight when they built something without a informational permit? You know, but there's no clause in, you know, when we're going to start enforcing this, and then, I mean, we're. We're by, we're giving out violations per day, but are these calendar days, are they business days? And we go find people for Saturday and Sunday when they can't come give us a permit? And then it comes back around to. How are we going to notify and when are we going to start? Finding people, are we going to start finding them as soon as they commence their project, or once they find out when they're in violation? And how many days until, how many days are we going to give these people to come into compliance without finding them? You know, it might take three, four days for the, them to get, you know, septic prints or whatever they might need to fulfill this permit. It, it just, it doesn't seem like something that's going to get us anywhere, it's going to create more confusion.
Agree.
Just a reminder, this is an amendment to a permit that already exists, okay, and I. Don't think any of us were on the board when it was first adopted, so I'm not sure. Does anyone who can speak to what happened back then that prompted this?
I, I almost wonder if the best thing for the town to do is to just get rid of this ordinance and. Maybe we can either come up with something better or go about a different way of letting our listeners get notification. Well, that's essentially, I mean, I agree, Don, that the listeners, the listeners need a way to know that something's going on in town, but some of that. Some of that might be just putting hours in, driving around town.
Well, if there were hours available, then that would be fine, but I, you know, I got to tell you from, from. The experience that I've had looking at it and from talking to Howard, uh, when this thing first came about. And, and knowing firsthand what Marsha has to deal with in there. That it's nice to have an, it's nice to have an ordinance that requires an informational permit. But it has no teeth unless you have some enforcement, and that's why the penalties are in there. It's to, it's basically to, to fire a shot over the bow in the town that. We have literally, and Bill can back me up. We have literally hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of construction. Additions, subtractions, deletions, renovations, additional outbuildings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Built in the town that we have no idea of. And like you say, you could do inspections, but. If you look at the workload in that office right now, in terms of just regular workload, just. Trying to keep up with daily operations, plus the questions of people coming in. It's a busy, busy town, people are coming in there every day, lots of people coming in looking for lister cards for property transfers and et cetera, et cetera. There isn't a time, and then we have contracted with Gail Gantic. Because she has the expertise to do this kind of stuff and go out and find them and add them on and do whatever. And we've had quite a discussion in here about the, the value of her doing that, well. Uh, believe me, the, the present lister's office does not have. That much leisure time to be driving around and looking for buildings that aren't on the, on the list yet. What, they come, they come to their attention based on. Personal references, or somebody say, hey, did you know this so-and-so's got a, a new garage up there, they put a three-car garage? Did, did you know there's a, an outbuilding over here, brand new, you know? So then you mark it down, you kind of red flag it, then somebody's got to go out and look at it.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I don't want to create law in this town because we have a shorthanded lister's office at the moment.
The law is already in town, that's, this is a modification.
Yeah, but we haven't been enforcing this, I mean, we, we enforced it once. And we haven't, since two thousand eight, we haven't done anything with this, it might as well.
Bill's disagreeing with you, but.
So you asked about enforcement, largely it's because we happen to find something that we don't have on record. I have sent out handful of letters to the property owners to say, hey. We saw you had this, I sent them a copy of the ordinance, I sent them a copy of the permit, and every case I've gotten it back and we're good, I give them thirty days. Like, to, to follow up, so. We don't charge for the permit, there's no cost to submit it, it's literally just, here's what I'm doing, handing it in and they're done. But I, I have sent out letters to people that have built projects that. In each case, they're like, didn't realize you had to do that, no problem, here you go. So, and I, I have, I have, I have a file with all of them in there and a sheet, so I do note the ones I had to let know and. Um, so it, it is very useful, and there is, the enforcement part of it doesn't take a lot of work. I mean, we may not know, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, but when I find out, we just send them a letter saying, hey, just need to do this, please, and in every case, it's been done. So it's, it works pretty well, and i- i- if we have a better solution, I'm, I'm. You, you come and see what we have and see what we, do we get and, and, and go from there, I'm happy to talk about that. But this, this tonight was to vote on the amendment to it. So that's why I gave you a copy of the original, so the original actually is probably stricter than what we actually have, it actually is stricter than what we have. Has the amendment, the amendment actually makes it less restrictive. And I, I see what you're saying, something about, about the definition of awning, I think that means, what means to me is the structure that has a roof. Whether it's an awning or something, whether permanent or not, the roof being permanent or not, not the structure, I think, what is what, is how I have read that. So it's not the structure being temporary, it's the, the thing, but, but as to Don's point, the later on, it talks like defined itself.
Yep.
It is, it is worthwhile, we do, we get them regularly. So we probably get, I don't know, fifteen a year, twenty a year, maybe, but we get them. So it, it, it is useful and, and it gives us some insight that we don't normally wouldn't get.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the amended permit tracking ordinance. Is there further discussion?
I'm.
Barbara's got her hand up.
Always going to be opposed to this.
All right.
My grandfather would roll over and is great, but I voted against for this.
Okay.
Um, yeah, didn't recently, in the last six months or so, didn't this um, come in handy? Um, for some uh, construction, some development of post-road. I think we uh.
Big, a big construction.
Not really. What'd it come in handy for? It allowed our listeners up there to look at it, but.
I, I, I think.
Mr. Pocat built what he built in a town with no zoning. He wasn't, if I'm correct, he wasn't in violation, I two fifty.
And we had an ordinance in effect that required him to fill out an informational permit, so that's the point here. This is.
Which he didn't. Still trying to make the point that this ordinance needs to go.
Well, the pending motion is not to repeal the ordinance, the pending motion is to approve these amendments to the ordinance. So.
No, you, you, you need to know that he, that you need to know that not only did he not file the per, the. The, the informational permits, which would have allowed the listeners to make judgments based on that, but. He didn't allow them on the property. Previously, there was quite a bit of dispute as to whether they were even allowed on the property, they were, they got, they got kind of booted off, they weren't.
You're going to have that whether you have a tracking ordinance or not, though.
Right, well, that's true, but.
What the difference is.
John hasn't spoken for a while, go ahead.
The differences. All of the people that comply, we have the ordinance, we are just amending it to make it easier to understand and a little simpler, so we, we can't repeal the ordinance. We either going to say yes, we're going to amend it or no, the thing is, is for the folks that want to have. Come in voluntarily, or if we let them know they're in violation, they can then fill it in, there's no problem. For those that want to be stubborn and challenge it, this ordinance, whether we amend it or not. It's still on the books, and there are penalties that go with it, and the penalties are to encourage people to comply and not spend money. That's usually what penalties are, if you, so we're going to vote tonight to make the ordinance. More usable, more user-friendly and easier to understand, if at some point. Somebody wants to get rid of this, that would be a whole nother function, so I think that I would call for the question. At this point that, do we vote to amend the ordinance or not, and that's where we are.
Right.
So the ordinance is going to be there, I understand your position and I respect it.
All right, anything new to be added to the discussion by any select board member? If not, all of those in favor of the um, adopting the amendments to the permit tracking ordinance, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sharon, what's your vote?
I vote aye, which code, I have no, I. Yep.
So it's a two-two tie, so I'll break the tie in favor of adopting the amendments to the ordinance. So that takes care of this, anybody have a, do you have the clean copy, Bill? I just scribbled on mine. Good debate, folks. That's right.
There is a space for everybody's sign.
Okay. So it takes care of B, next, Barbara, do you have anything else?
Uh, just a couple of things, so we'll, um, we'll get, we'll keep the work continuing on the other two ordinances. Um, that I mentioned earlier, uh, the um, energy committee is, is this a good? Is this an appropriate time, Mary, to?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so the Joint Energy Committee met. A, a couple of weeks ago, um, and we're making some plans for the townwide celebration. And for all of, all of you who've been waiting so patiently for the results of the survey, um, they'll be in the circle, the next circle. Uh, so feel free to check those out, and um, for those of you who are wondering what's new with the Pocket Park. Um, not a whole lot, but uh, GMP um, has indicated that it will look at the draft MOU that we sent it. And hopefully ha- will have some movement shortly on that. And unless you want to talk about MERP, Mary, um, that's all I have.
Okay, um, so if you take a look at the Energy Committee minutes, they are in your packet, um, there was no action item. Needed from Energy Committee, just kind of an update. Um, do you want to tell us, there's an opportunity for a. Public informational meeting coming up, and that's on, is it MERP? Is that what we call it?
Uh, MERP, it's the Municipal Energy Resilience uh, Program, M E R P. For short, um, yeah, there's, um, there's a webinar on uh, April sixth at noon time. Um, that anyone can join, and if you need the link, um, you can let uh, me or Bill know about that. Um, MERP has three facets, it's, it's a very large program to uh, upgrade municipal buildings. To weatherize them or to change out of fossil fuel heating. Um, and, and that sort of thing, so there's three parts, the first part is a mini grant. It's called a community capacity building grant, and that's up to four thousand dollars if you want to hire a consultant. Um, to write grants, um, if you want to set up an energy committee, if you want to do some townwide mailings. Et cetera, there's a lot of things that could fall into that mini grant. Um, and then, um, it looks like there will be at least one town building, at least one. Eligible for a free uh, energy assessment, and it could be either a, a walkthrough type. Or a much more extensive one, so there'll be an application process uh, for the first part, for that part. And then as a result, what comes out of the assessment, um, there will be an application to submit projects. I don't know how many per town, um, but there should be, um, I mean, I, I see it quite probable. That once an assessment is done, even on one building, there, there could be multiple projects. And um, that's the one uh, where you can go up to a half a million dollars per project with the SMERP money. So, oh, there's a, a lot of, um, a lot of opportunity there, and uh, we will keep you abreast. Uh, with new developments as they happen, but right now, the only applica- application that's open. Is for that community capacity building grant.
This could be a source of money for some. Energy efficiency work downstairs in this building, correct?
I think so.
Okay.
We'll, uh, we'll have to put the uh, the, the application together and, and, uh, and, and I would advise you apply. You, you need to do one of those two types of assessments before you can apply for the project money. So.
Okay.
And an, an assessment should give you a, a really good idea of what projects need to be done, maybe some price tags and. And what could be accomplished.
Okay, good, thank you, Barbara, any questions for Barbara Noisepulling of our Town Planning Commission? And thank you very much for staying on top of these grant opportunities, because I'm, I'm hoping to go after more of them in the future.
Okay.
Okay, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner. Live and in person.
First one in the hot seat, it's like being first.
Okay.
All right, off we go. Uh, the last couple of weeks, we had a couple of. Uh, storm events. You know, you know, same old stuff, uh, we still have about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five tons of salt in the building, so we're good for whatever. Mother Nature chooses to throw at us the rest of this year, I would think. Uh, contractors are up to forty-two calls, so. Yeah, we might make it, yeah, we got a couple of things in the forecast here in the next few days, but we'll, we'll get there. Their last uh. Pay installment is this pay period, and then we've got to figure out the other half of the uh, fuel stipend that we gave them. So that'll be in the next pay period, and that'll be the end of payments for that for this year.
And if we go into overtime, then, well, you're, you, you address that as it comes.
Right, and, and we're, we're still good money-wise there. Good money wise there. Last week, uh, we had our oil water separator cleaned. Um, so there's floor drains in the building. That drain everything out and it goes in this. Does its thing. Um, it took out about two hundred gallons of. About fifty gallons of water, a hundred and fifty gallons of. Muck. Nice stuff.
Yeah.
Everybody should have some. Um, we also took delivery of our first new to us truck. Uh, the Friday after the last meeting. Uh. Thankfully, we haven't had to use it yet. Uh, but we're ready when that happens. Um, we did a couple of days last week and serviced all of the rect departments vehicles and equipment.
Nice.
So. Mike Roke and Mo when the grass starts to grow.
Oh.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah.
Mike lives to mo. Oh, I know, that's why we did it, that's why we did it while there's still snow on the ground, cuz. We knew he wouldn't be coming and looking for them, but next week is all bets are off. Uh, we did have a a highway committee meeting last week on Friday to address a couple of things, um. You wanna?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yep.
The top of the list of the paving.
Right, and that was pretty much.
Yeah.
Not in your packet. Item A, which are the. Summary sheets on the paving bids that came in, so somewhere between. Dave and Joey.
Yep. So um, these are in order of the way that they uh. The prices came in from lowest to highest. Uh, Wilk was low, uh, they went. Their their paving price was substantially lower than everybody else, um. Their price was uh seventy-six twenty-five a ton. Well, depends on which option, uh, option. One, they came in at seventy-six seventy-five a ton. And option two was uh seventy-six twenty-five a ton. Um, Fuller was next and his prices across the board were eighty-eight thirty-three. Per ton. Uh, so you can see how the the different options and all of the all played out. Um. And. Basically, Wilk said this is in their backyard cuz. Fair percentage of this is basically in their backyard. And, you know, I mean, they're gonna have zero tied up in trucking where everybody else is hauling it from. Far away, so that's how they came in kind of low, so uh. It would be my recommendation to award to Wilk. The prices indicated.
So which option?
Uh, so option one. Is East Pittsford Road. Um. I don't have the footage, but um. To mill from the original. Uh. Stuff we talked about from Camrack up to. I forget the house number now. Um, and then option two, we actually submitted to the state for the class two. Um, paving grant. So if we get that paving grant, we're gonna uh pave all the way to um. Winridge. From Camrack.
The difference is about what forty thousand? And that would between the two seventy-seven, four sixty-six and three seventeen. It's it's roughly forty thousand, but that's if we do that additional money.
If we do the.
So part of that will be covered by grant and then part of it's, that's our portion would be the additional forty. That that's how they think, cuz the grant is. Quite a bit.
Yeah.
So we have applied, we're gonna do like, I don't know the footage, but let's say we were gonna do a mile. And if we get the grant, we can do two miles, that about forty thousand.
I think it came out to was like, I remember the numbers, these are gonna be rough, but it was like thirty-six hundred feet to do option one. And uh, like forty-eight hundred feet or no fifty-one hundred feet to do option two, it's just shy of a mile.
Yeah.
So, that's what the difference is, so.
What's the drop dead date on the grant approval or not?
Uh, we've we've submitted, I'm not sure when we're gonna hear back.
In in this paving contract, so that's July first.
Right.
We are under contract with Fuller Sand and Gravel in the current budget. And there's there's another item here, we'll discuss it after we do this. Uh, regarding that, but I would move that we uh, based on the recommendation, Highway Committee, we. So accept Wilk's bid for the paving for the. I guess twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Option which?
Uh, we're both, I mean, it is, if we get the grant, we go with the whole thing, and if we don't get the grant, if we option, it would be for options one and two. Depending on the um grant. Cuz we won't be coming back.
And Wilk is okay with that contingency if you know, okay.
They understand the situation.
Okay.
You're low on both of them anyway.
Right, yeah.
You you know, if that grant come, I don't know when their schedule is gonna have and when Dave will be ready for them to start. But let's say they don't start till after July first and we don't know about the grant until. July or August, we'll still be in that. You know, maybe East.
I would think we would know before then, uh, quite honestly, because the state knows that people are gonna.
Yeah.
They need to pave.
They have.
Right.
And the the deadline to get the grants in is uh April fifteenth. So I I would assume shortly there, by the middle of May, they should have it.
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
Also.
Motion's made targeted to accept. Wilk paving's low bid, um. At least option one and option two, if we receive the state grant to cover it.
Correct.
The additional. Um, mileage. Discussion.
Kurt. Gonna have issues with a mill and fill, I've been pounding this for a year. But. Nobody's gonna listen to me, so is what is, that road needs to be reclaimed. There's gonna be way too much reflective cracking, that road will crack in six months, if not a year. Hundred percent. And the lower section that we've reclaimed still hasn't cracked. So, that's where I'm at, but. There it is.
Response, any? Sharon, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, um.
Dave, you wanna comment on the on that whole concept of mill and fill versus reclaim, I mean. That that would cut our mileage down like tremendously, right? Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, this. This this the the mill and fill, I mean, if you do a reclaim, you got a lot more, a lot more uh. Equipment work, you gotta. A lot of the problems we that. I've run into since I've been here. Has been reclaimed. That. And people have been in this room complaining the driveways are left high, you know, and you gotta, you gotta take the time, it takes a lot of time. To cut all that stuff out, and then you gotta, you gotta be careful, because if you take out too much, you take out all the good. And you're right back to the the crap that's underneath, so you either gotta rebuild the road. Or. Leave the driveways high, I mean, we've got driveways. That were paved two years ago that I'm still getting calls on, I gotta go back and and try to deal with somehow. Um.
It's a good practice, but the consequences create a lot of hazards. I mean, the reclaim is a good practice, you're 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 grinding that stuff, put it back in, but the the aeration of the material. And then. The what he what Dave is talking about, it raises the road, even if you wait a week or ten days to pave after you do it and let the cars pound it down and. Roll it and regrade it, it's still, it it's that aeration, so. And and, you know. Yes, what we're doing is probably not as. Quite as it's good, you know, to just know off the top and then refill it, but. Dave is trying to come up with a plan, and this is his first paving season, so this is what he's proposing to the board. It's not um normal practice for the board to tell. The road commissioner what to pave or how to do his paving, I mean, we can express our opinion, but it's his job to do that, we rarely tell a department head how to do things. Um. McKinley Avenue was reclaimed. And paved in one day, two years ago. And he's still dealing with the after. We, you know, we had terrible complaints, we've had to redo, you know, that that turned into a nightmare, and I'm not sure why that practice was done that way. Um, normally when a road is reclaimed, they they go in there, they grade it off, and then they leave. And that road will sit and they don't come back and pay regrade that, pave that. You know, what you really hope for, it rains on it six or seven times and the traffic and everything, but so I I don't know until a. Better answer for how that. Disturbs the the road base and how it affects the driveways, and the more driveways you have, you know, the ones that are on the high side. Usually don't complain, the ones on the low side are there, wow, you know. Even even just a a normal uh shim and over. You're adding three to four inches to a road, you know, and we have all kinds of difficulties getting in and out of my driveway and grocery, and so. Yeah, you have to come up with some plan that. Makes the roads happy and makes the residents happy, and and this is Dave's plan for this year, so. I'm good, you know, we we're going and and.
Well, I'm good with it, I just.
You know, that's the that's the downside to reclaim.
Misinterpret my question, my question was directed at the road commissioner so that it would be part of an educational. Experience for the listeners and for the board, so because I'd like to know. How he's thinking.
So what happens with a mill and fill is you're not. You're not erasing your cracks, so you have a crack in the road that goes. A big crack will go to the bottom of the asphalt. You're milling the top off. And then you're recoating with that crack still underneath. And that crack will move with the frost. And it reflects back up to the surface. Where if you grind it, you're A, you're adding road base. Which is good gravel, you're turning that asphalt into gravel, mixing it with the gravel and the road base, making better base, you're also erasing those cracks. And this this is on the paving list, it's nothing that Dave was on the paving list as a mill and fill last year. As well.
Let me ask you another question, Dave, is there any theory at all? To doing a mill and fill. But between the fill and after the mill. Doing a crack fill? Not that I know of. Asphalt, because you you got. Towns all over New York State are doing crack fill on actual cracks in the roads and they'll get another. I don't know, they'll get another two, three. So crack crack filling is usually done on a finished surface, once you get these cracks, um. And it basically just keeps the water out, so the water doesn't get in there and freeze in the winter.
Right.
And that kind of thing, that's basically what that's all about. Hard to find the cracks when it's milled. Well, you don't, you don't generally fill them. Uh, when it's milled in that in that process, it usually goes on that top course. After, you know, it's been paved for a year or two or five or eight or whatever it is when the cracks start to. Start to show themselves. Uh, just my logic going, because like like Joe's, like Kurt said. But when you mill it. What you got left is still got a crack in it, so if you could fill that. So the the crack fill is is basically a a a rubber.
Asphalt rubber, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it's it's not structural at all, it's it's, I mean, you see it out on the interstates, they go and they fill them and. They're they look like snakes out in the road, they're just, it just peels all that rubber out and it just, it's it's not structural at all. It's just melted rubber and some ass.
Pending questions?
Is to accept.
It's to accept the bid or not, okay, we. Talked about that?
Yep.
All in favor of the motion uh to accept the Wilk bid, option one. And option two, if we get the state grant, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Any knows? Motion carries. So, and let's see, Highway Committee, you had other things?
There's there's one other item, the um. Ongoing Town Line Road project up there, which is under the current budget, um, we. Have to get that paid, Fuller Sand and Gravel will be doing that as part of. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um. Tom Fuller came back and told us that, um, he can't do it for the price that. Because of this, the in inflation of the um. Liquid asphalt and all that stuff, so it's gonna run an additional seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars to do. To do that road, now, we have a grant in in. While we were having the meeting, Bill got on his phone and he emailed. The grant person with the state and they explained to us, our grant is up to two hundred thousand dollars, so. If we spend two hundred and forty thousand, it's an eighty percent match. We can get up to two hundred thousand, so our cost, if if the road comes in at two thirty-seven. Seven sixty-two ninety-six is what the projected cost is, the town's cost isn't, will be thirty, roughly thirty-seven thousand, forty thousand dollars. That's the way the grant works. If you pave it for two hundred thousand, we get eighty percent, which is one sixty. So that's that's the nature of this grant, we got that from the grant, so um, I would move that, you know, we authorize uh Dave to tell. You know, so the the road has to be repaid. And we. And it was. Done with Fuller Sand and Gravel, and I think it it's in our best interest to stick with it, we didn't. Go back.
That was the plan originally.
Right, they were gonna do it, and they wanted that Culver project to set. For one winner, before they went and did the finish coat on that, and and I'm sure there's some deterioration to that. Yeah, yeah, and and that was a good plan on everybody's part to do that.
I have uh seventy-five thousand dollars in my paving line right now, so I can cover that. Thirty-six thousand or whatever.
So the motion's been made to accept Fuller Sand and Gravel. Um, there's a bid, there's three in here.
Uh, now, this is, this is just part of the minutes, this is additional. Yeah, yeah, this is not part of the paving bid, this goes back to the current contract that we're under with Fuller Sand and Gravel.
Okay, so we're back in the Highway Committee Minutes.
Right, and and they needed some additional monies because of that, I mean.
So this is item two, it looks like A.
Yeah.
In the Highway um Committee Minutes and motion's been made, is there a second?
Second of motion.
Right, motion's been made and seconded. For an increase of seventeen thousand, six thirty-four fifty-six to Fuller Sand and Gravel, discussion.
And that's 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 based on the estimate, that's not an exact number.
Alright, no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Sharon?
Aye.
Motion carries. No oppose, so. We're, we've approved Fuller Sand and Gravel to pave.
Great, thank you.
Townline Road.
I don't think there was any, the only other thing we did talk about, and I'll bring this up, it's a paramount place. Um. The folks up there, and I'm not sure who the gentleman is, they don't wanna follow the proper procedure for. They'd like that road paved, they want to get included in the town's paving. Bid process and contract, but they don't wanna come to, from what I understand, a highway committee meeting and express what they want done. Um, so that we can discuss it with the road commissioner and the highway committee, and then bring it to the board for recommendation, um. We have never. Paved a private road that I know of under the town's paving. Uh, contact, there were some questions that did come up there with. Who's gonna be responsible for if they don't like the paving job or if there's issues and. Um, without further discussion with them. I'd say, you know, they missed the bulk of this year. Um, if they wanna come in, you know, they can bring their um ideas to us. And we need to talk to our paving contractors, right now we work with three and find out how they feel. Do they wanna pave a private road at the town's paving price? But being paid by private individuals, they they may not even wanna do it.
That's off, as you say, it's off the table because paving is.
But that was probably the biggest thing, and then we did talk about the energy, um, uh, grants that Barb was talking about. And, well. The Highway Garage is a large open span building, I mean, the ceiling is insulated and stuff, but it's a very high building. Um, I think it has eighteen to twenty foot eaves, and one of the thoughts was putting in a suspended ceiling in there. At a height that would allow the dump trucks to put their bodies up and put something in there, um, even with a new heating system. Um, they run all the time, I mean, we could put additional ceiling fans or something in there, but a good portion of the heat is finding its way up to the ceiling. So that's something we might wanna have, that might be one of the buildings we have looked at if we could. If somebody thought, so, those are the highlights of that. Anything I missed?
Nope, you covered that. And then I just had one more quick thing, uh, I met with Robert Clark today, uh, we met at the Culver on Stratton Road in the dip. Yeah, oh.
Gotta go.
Gotta go. About the first twenty feet, there's no bottom. About midway point in the road, there's a buckle and the be the north side. Where it's rotted out and the rocks and stuff are starting to push in, so he's gonna do some uh. Some preliminary footwork. And get me some stuff so we can get on the on the state's hydraulic. Study and start working toward making a big giant hole in Stratton.
Did he give you?
The forwards don't have bottoms.
That's a good thing.
We should be complying with this one.
Yeah.
No bottom in it.
So. Did he give you any idea if it's gonna be able to be put a tube type in like that?
He said.
If you're gonna go have to do the project like.
He he said there's, he's gotta look at, it it's all. All in. All engineering formulas and goofy stuff, but he said that there's actually a way you can line it. But he's gotta do the calculations and make sure that uh it meets the fifty-year storm stuff. Uh, it's like an eight-foot culvert that's in there.
I've been in there. We put dry hydrant on.
There's a, there's a foot of water in it, three feet wide. I mean, it's an eight-foot culvert. I mean, it'd take all the water in the world, but.
One of the things that might be inculcated, because I do believe that's fed by a pond that Hubbard's own. And they can shut that water.
Yeah, so I, and I told him that he asked where it was fed and I said, that was the old Eddie Ice Pond up in there and I gave him a little history lesson. And then I said, but I'm not sure what feeds that. So he was gonna kinda go upstream and see what is feeding into the pond and. What, what it would take and all of that.
Anything we need to do about that tonight?
Not, not yet, just, I was just kind of.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much, Dave. And well, I should say, anything from select board members for our road commissioner?
Oh, just good job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dave.
Okay. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Good evening. So last two weeks, clearly had six, six, sixty-six calls to service. We had nine traffic stops. Uh, big things we dealt with, we have. Panthers had assault and attempted robbery. Or by the employee and then uh with the help of their uh close circuit TV. Uh, they came down, we really get the picture, figured out what it was within three, four hours and had him rest the next day. And I think he's still. Other than the cruelty to a child case on uh. Bear Hill Road. Uh, Jimmy had a DUI drugs in the south end during the traffic down in the plaza. Then he had aggravated domestic assault. Almost a night.
Another two weeks in that one town, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fun and games at the Cortina.
Yeah, uh, few, few calls in the south end and if you look at, I think we had three or four retail thefts. In south end. I guess twenty.
Like, questions for, are about the um, the report for our chief?
No, but I had a, I had a call. Yesterday from Mr. Gudapelli. And it seems that the state wants to redesignate that program. Well.
Now, we're talking which place?
Well, I'm not exactly sure because I asked him. How all of a sudden the cold weather program can turn into something other than a cold weather program. I mean, he didn't have an answer. Except that the state wants to extend those vouchers. At least through April. And we had agreed on March thirty-first, but.
Now, this is days in, correct?
That's correct, days in, of, of, of which we have. Few problems, minimal.
They, it comes and goes.
Comes and goes. Has it been increasing?
It depends on the clock, on literally what individuals they have there.
Right.
Sometimes, sometimes it's good and although, somebody in, they can, you know, it's a game changer.
Well, that's what I cautioned him on because he's been pretty straightforward with the board, but um he uh, I said. That'll be up to a board discussion. Uh, you know, this, this program was supposed to end March thirty-first, but. If you, if you have any vouchers that. That persist after March thirty-first, those are still subject to the ten dollars. The board, which you wanna do with them. He's gonna make, he'll make a payment in April if he has vouchers in there. From April and, and what he said to me was that he would. He would only continue them until his contract with the franchisee for the renovation starts. Which is gonna be on that particular building.
Maybe uh maybe paving one up there too.
What's that?
Maybe paving one up there too. They have to spend a little more time there.
So. I'm just letting you know that.
Yeah, and Carrie, Carrie and I checked the payments. Um, the, the days in is paying in, in after the month closes. So we don't know yet whether. But uh, the Cortina, okay, the Cortina Inn. Pays in advance and we found out that on March third, I think it was, they paid for the month of April. So they had every intention of continuing. So there we are, folks, and that's.
So is there any?
Yeah, we've.
Recourse in, to me, that's like violation of contract. So what do we? Where do you go?
Two, two different ones. One is the Cortina, we are waiting to hear a um. A court's ruling on a motion for summary judgment. As to whether they are required to get a permit amendment. Um, which were, you know, we, we want at the district commission level and we um have every reason to believe we're gonna win at this level. Um, and then the second issue is um one that hasn't been brought to any authorities yet. And that is whether the days in needs to get an act two fifty permit. Because what they're, they're, by their change in use, our argument would be. Um, their change in use triggers act two fifty where before they were grandfathered. Because the um, what was it? Um, Howard Johnson, Howard Johnson's was built. Before act two fifty, but the use has changed now, so um.
And, and the thing is, if there is, you have a hundred and forty-seven rooms of what was all fourteen in the. I, I never envisioned that. April first and hundred and forty-seven rooms of people are just gonna be out in the street. That, that was never going to happen. And the state of Vermont has no plan to relocate those people anywhere and they're just gonna continue to keep paying. And that government is gonna continue to keep taking. And the problem is not gonna go away until they figure out a better housing pro- program for homeless people and. The legitimate homeless people deserve some help. The ones that are infiltrating the state of Vermont for a free handout and a free place to stay. So they can do whatever they're doing, whether it's legal or illegal, which from your standpoint is mostly illegal. Um, you know. None of this makes any sense at all.
Is it time to see if we can bring in our town attorney to talk to us at our next select board meeting to give us options?
I think that, you know, you gotta go, somebody's gotta go, you know, like I said before, we have all of these people. And, you know, it's not like you're gonna move them out. They're not just gonna throw them in the street. It's just not gonna happen. And, and my thought is. Deporting them to Montpelier, where most of the problem starts. You know, met with a lot of smiles and what I do, but I didn't tell you. It's like.
Oh, you'd get a lot more.
Permanent.
Santas did it.
Go if you deported them to Woodstock because then. There would be massive complaints up to Montpelier about that or Manchester or, you know.
I'm, I'm just saying.
May not be able to solve this tonight.
But here's the other thing, Mary.
What are our options here?
Here's the other thing, the, the state ran out of money because the federal, the federal money dried up.
Yep.
So, part of this continuum. Is going to involve a redesignation of what the criteria is for being in there. And I think the state. Quite frankly, I think the state has come to the realization that they're going to have to put some. Brakes on the outsiders coming in and whatever and go to what you said, Joe, those that are actually in need. As opposed to those that just wanna vacation there. And we just have to wait and see because we don't have any control, but.
I think to Mary's point, times hard again, what are, what are we doing now? You know, I, we made a good faith contract, what we thought was, or what we figured was a. Responsible business person and you take their word and, and we have found that, that's pretty much not wrong. So now we need to.
No offense either, that's still God out there.
No fencing too, okay.
The, the point is, there's, there's three of us working the road. We got one thing, that's three of us doing this by ourselves. As soon as we sign, sign on the state police don't wanna help us, I don't blame them. We got the whole county to do it. Uh. That's where we're at right now. If we're down at the court, if we're down there doing the patrol, they're wanting us to do other things. Because the state police are busy doing their thing. They don't wanna. Like, you're right there. Why don't you take this call? I already put in twelve hours. I wanna stay extra like Jimmy did for. Till five o'clock in the morning because he was down there till almost eleven and they, he said, okay, I'll go check on it. And then it turned into a. You know, major aggravated domestic assault. Now he's stuck with it all night long. But you can't like, I'll do it tomorrow. If, you've gotta deal with it and you're the only one that can do it. You don't have a bunch of buddies that can come help you and do things. He. Went to state police barracks and kept working until it was done. That's hard.
That's our concern. I mean, it's, there are payments being made, but that doesn't relieve the burden from the officers who are trying to cover that and the rest of.
Make them pay more and let me hire two more people. Make them pay. Give me, give me forty-five thousand dollars. I can put, I can put two more guys, guys, girls on the road, whatever. As long as they can wear a badge and do the job and go and get the training, then we can take some of the heat off us. That's what I'm picking.
All right, let's get um.
Here, they don't have the guys to handle their contracts right now.
Figured they wouldn't.
I bet everything, yeah, I'd love to, I, but I, I don't have, we don't have. My guys are all tired.
Yeah.
If, if I'm not.
Go ahead, Sharon.
The, the warm weather's coming. You think it's bad now? Wait, just wait and see. This is, this is just, this is ridiculous. You know, why are we gonna sit with these people? They, they, they feed us a line of crap and then they just. It, it, to me, it feels like there, there, it's a payoff.
The thing about, the thing about it, if you wanna pay. Guys and gals that do the job, go to this work. You look at everyone else around here, we're probably, we, we weren't bad, but right now we're probably the lowest paid department in Ballin County.
Yeah, yeah.
It's because things are changing. I know the city's down at least seventeen officers right now. They're paying their people, seventeen people down. So.
Right. Okay, so let me see if I can get ahold of Kevin to come in and give us options for our next meeting.
Any more questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your service, Don. Been second time around with you. It's been more pleasant the second time than it was the first time.
He's, he's referring to back in the seventh grade. When his homework was almost done.
Okay, Mike Rowe, town rec director.
Um, couple of things. Um, Sharon, I hope you're okay. Did you get the flowers that uh Bill sent you from me? I asked Bill to send them a couple of weeks ago. Okay, well, he was supposed to. I just wanted to know. He said he would.
Okay.
Eating the whole fruit basket by the time you got your flowers.
Couple of things, uh, thanks to Dave for getting my stuff ready to go, cuz I'm gonna mill it soon. I don't care if there's. Snow on the ground or not. I hope to have the courts, pickleball, tennis, all that reopened by middle of April. So people can start enjoying the spring, summer and winter activities at pulls up our parks. Uh, baseball sign-ups are ongoing. Thanks to Bill, the form is working really well. What do we have? Twenty-six? Of course, he's in the back on there. Ah, I think we have about twenty-six or twenty-seven people signed up already, which is great for this part of the year. It's fantastic. So that'll go well. Um, we're hoping to hear off our baseball season, um, the middle of April. Hopefully we'll start practicing. Obviously, it's all weather permitted. And our parks. Escape the last wrath of winter. Um, other than that, um, I did run into, I came across um, a group. That, and who'd you say was on townwide celebration committee?
Sharon and.
So in my teaching capacity, I ran across a group that is coming to speak with our kids at school and. In the conversation, they would like to come to the townwide celebration and set up a booth. And I said, that would be awesome because they also have a dunk tank. And I thought, and they have a booth or something, so. We can talk about that when that committee meets, but I, you know, I have a dunk tank that is being offered to. I want celebration, Mary, your face is.
Yeah.
You wanna sit on the dunk tank?
Traditionally, the heads. I, I gotta cook, sorry.
I gotta run the place, so I can't be there. But um, that, so that's a possibility. I don't know.
No, no, don't let her repeat it.
Let me rephrase that. This, this four-foot-nine person is not gonna be thrown into that tank. So.
And then they throw a ball.
Right.
They don't, yeah, we have a ladder.
You can hold your breath for a couple of minutes.
Come up with a, a ladder to fit you. Uh, only other thing is, uh, probably about mid-April. I know we have a couple of meetings, not really, not that many cuz April is Saturday. Uh, the cover will be coming off shortly. Cool, and the um cleaning. If anybody wants to join me in the bottom of the swamp at the end, you're more than welcome to come down uh for the cleaning. Or if you have great ideas how to get that much sludge out of the very bottom.
Wait, Dave just got a bunch of sludge from the highway garage, so he might have some ideas.
Again, we gotta pump it out fifteen feet. Up to get it out. So if you have an idea, let me know. Other than that, I don't think, oh, I just contacted our mountain bike guy for doing the trail, so hopefully that'll get started this spring and completion early summer. And that's kind of it so far that I think.
There's probably two people a week that have their dog on leash up there.
Yeah, that we, I don't know if you were, we talked about when Sharon gets healthy enough, we are having a rec committee meeting and we are talking about. What we're going to do moving forward with that um sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
She's nice and healthy.
Just to do a walk and there were two women with, I think, three dogs, all off-leash.
Only, like, in the course of a week, I'm three or four people. And, and now, now it's spring, the days you get nicer. Literally people, nobody has a dog on leash.
Yeah.
So I, I'm thinking some basic signage and.
Non-compliance, practice of walking dogs at my place.
Your decision to do that. So we're gonna meet as a committee and try to figure out how we can do this last ditch like, hey, this is it. You don't comply. I haven't.
I know, they're bad.
And we would provide bags and trash. They still don't really even bother to use it, so. I'm kinda at the end, it's really sad, but if that doesn't change, then. You will be making the decision for the park as to what will transpire moving forward and then.
If they aren't gonna leash their dogs, if they're not gonna clean up, then no dogs. I, I mean. You can't, you just can't keep that, it's a health issue.
Uh, maybe the Herald will watch the videotape and report on the meeting and put in the fact of.
There's also the um circle deadline coming up, so a little boxed thing would be really good.
Take care of that.
Right, exactly.
Other than that, unless you have questions.
Mike, do you wanna do something for the circle on it or?
How about if you do it? I don't mind doing it.
You know what, Mike, I'll be perfectly honest with you right now. Um, I'm trying to get.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Take care of it. I know you can't tie your shoes. I'll take care of it.
Okay. Mike's gonna cover this one.
I know, I love you dear though.
All right.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, town first constable, Mike Delahanty.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, good evening.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
So sticking with the Northwood theme, is Mike Rowe still right there?
Mike.
Just caught him in time.
Perfect.
Get away.
Mike, we doing dust? We're doing, uh, locking the, the gate starting, uh, Saturday, April one?
JP, is that the date?
I did talk to John Paul, uh, just confirming it.
Is that the traditional? I think it's November first, April first, we unlock.
Okay, okay.
Yes, we will be locking the gate and highway day left. So highway will unlock.
April through November first.
Yep.
Yes. Yes, Mike, starting this weekend.
Right on it.
And I'll contact my gatekeeper and let him know that he gets there on the weekend. So we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Perfect. So in saying that and kind of going off the topics, uh, you guys were just discussing. I don't think it'd be a terrible idea to post on, maybe on social media, the park rules. Um, you know, the same ones that are obviously posted as you're entering the park. Um, you know, obviously the, the dust till dawn. And all the other miscellaneous things about the park and obviously including the, the, the dog ordinance as well. Um, people obviously by now should know all these things, but wouldn't be a bad idea to give them a fresh reminder. So that we can at least say we're trying. Um, and I know that the town page gets a lot of traction. So I think it would be at least a decent idea to put that out there, uh, going into the spring and summer season.
Bill was scribbling a note as you were speaking, so I think. Very good.
Okay. And you know, Bill, I always hate to add things to your list, because I know it's always long, so.
Excuse me for a minute.
Yeah.
But beyond that, behind, beyond, uh, Northwood Park, I've got nothing else.
Okay. Is it, is it okay if micro leaves now?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Night, Mike.
Okay, hi, Mike. Thank you, JP.
Okay, thanks. Um, speaking of John Paul, uh, let's see, we'll do public safety building. John Paul, you have an update for us.
Hi, good evening. Uh, congratulations to your newest member. Um, so we had a number, the low bid on the project was. Five million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We can absolutely save two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. By going with a steel building that's erected on site. And I confirmed that today with Ed Clark. Now, under the rubric of estimating low and delivering high, there are some additional savings. But they're not the kind of savings that I would feel comfortable representing to you as a given. The two hundred and twenty-two thousand, Ed is very comfortable supporting. That's a given. We know we can save that. So that would reduce the amount needed to be raised for the new building. It reduces the low bid. And the, the bottom line number would be five million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now. It's, and, and that's the building just as is, no deletions, as Kirk brought up some good points, the walls are stay the same. Everything stays the same. The only thing is, we're not paying a building company. To come up with a design that can be put into place easily on site. And that's what that extra money was. On those prefab buildings, they were charging us approximately two hundred thousand dollars just for design services. So the, the good news is that we can represent to the voters that we need five million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Hey.
Makes us about one point on the endowment. Which I think will last.
Which I, yeah, but Joey's, Joey's. Had his pencil out and he's scribbling, so we're gonna see if we can close that gap. We might be able to. Yeah. Sorry, Sharon, go ahead.
I said Joey is our numbers guy.
Sure is. Okay, well, good news. Thank you, JP.
So, so JP, so that should, that should be the number, um. Is Ed Clark and Vic Shappi, are they all okay with this number? Because we need, we need to start formulating, um, our plan for an informational meeting to be held in April. Regarding what the shortfall is and how we plan on, um. Paying up, paying that shortfall. And I, I think we, we have, we will have the money in place to do that. Um, and not have to expand the amount of borrowed, um, funds, you know, we. There, there, I don't have the exact number. They know it was approximately two point one million to bond for. Um, the board has been kicking around the idea of borrowing money conventionally and not get a bond. Because the bond ties our hands with any type of early payback and a conventional loan would not, so. Um, so I guess we just need to confirm that number and I believe you're. Is that number good with those two folks? Uh, yes, it is, Joe. As a matter of fact, I spoke to Ed this afternoon and that's the consensus that he and Vic felt comfortable with. Okay, cuz, cuz that, you know, that puts us, you know, I believe with monies on hand and. Well, staying in tune with the projected income from our one percent, um, we should be very close to the one point one million dollars. In our, um, capital improvement fund. Which would offset that difference, so we shouldn't have to ask for any more indebtedness, which is what I'm hoping for. I mean, if you guys could deliver that for the town, that would be, uh, that'd be excellent. That'd be excellent, because we'll never get it this cheap again. I think everybody's pretty much agreed that. Okay. All right.
Was a question.
That's all. Everybody else.
Any questions from select board members of JP? Okay, thank you very much. Call anytime with news like that, JP.
Have a good night. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Let's see, we're, we're gonna get to Bill Sweet, town administrator, but let's do. You folks have been very patient and thank you very much and.
I hope we're entertaining.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Sharon?
Do you ma- do you mind if I, I'm getting pretty tuckered out?
No, I can understand that. Um, let me just take a quick look. Um.
Probably anything.
We've done the, uh, MS four report. We're gonna listen to the, um. Report from Solly Engineering about the, uh, Route seven south coffee shop.
The repurposing of the, uh, Friendly's property, right?
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's in the packet. So, um, we have, we have minor stuff left, but if you are, you need to go get a good night's sleep, so. Thank you for staying with us as long as you have.
All right, thanks, Mary. Thanks, guys.
Take care. Okay.
I just wanted to start with an introduction.
Yes, please.
Most everyone, Paul Kesselring with Endless Whistling Engineering, Casey Birch with Solely Engineer. Casey's group has been working on a design for redevelopment of that property with a coffee shop. And I'm assisting them with act two fifty permitting. And so that's why we wanted to come before the board tonight to just. Give you an introduction to the project, give you an opportunity to ask any questions and also let you know that. We'll welcome any follow-up questions, you know, in the future. We're hoping to submit a, um, a permit application to act two fifty around the end of next month. And so you'll be seeing notification. So I'll turn it over to Casey.
Yeah, so it, uh, it's pretty simple. Um, the owner is planning to demolish the existing Friendly's building. Um, and construct a two thousand four hundred square foot coffee shop. Um, we are maintaining the, the existing access as is. Um, we will be milling it because it is pretty, um, not in good condition right now. Um, we are keeping the, the limits of the southern end parking area. And, um, we will be coming in with thirty-five parking spaces, two of which are ADA compliant near the entrance of the building. Um, the, the coffee shop does have a five hundred square foot patio area in the back. And it also is equipped with a drive-through. Um, it's a dual drive-through lane at the end and then it. Converges into, um, converges into a one lane, uh, and then we have a bypass lane around it, uh, for any people to wanna, you know, exit the. Drive-through lane and leave, um. We're showing snow areas on here. That'll be in the rear. We have dumpster pad area in the rear as well. Um. Yeah, it's a pretty simple. Uh, overall, uh, we are reducing impervious area, about ten thousand square feet from existing condition. So that'll help with stormwater quality and, um, volume. Uh, we're maintain, we're pretty much maintaining the existing system as is, and we are gonna, um, provide a water quality unit. At the end of it, so all the runoff that leaves the site will be treated.
Yeah, they've developed a landscape and lighting plan. Only developed by the time they go to act two fifty.
Do you foresee a problem? You know, do you, you're not changing the use of the property or basically. Um, did you see any hurdles with act two fifty for this? You've been doing this a long time, so you've been in home.
It's highly unlikely. Um, I mean, like you said, it's very similar. Changes.
I don't see where you're doing anything really different than what was there.
This a wholly owned private or is it a franchise?
Um, they don't have anybody signed up for a lease yet, but they are, they are, um, talking with a few national coffee chains, so it would be, um. They, they will, they will lease the property, I believe, or they will own the property still, but lease the, the, the facility. Is what I'm gathering.
Is the building footprint similar? To what?
No, I believe, uh, the existing, compared to existing.
Yeah.
I think it's, um, the existing is like four thousand square feet, so we're reducing it, uh, almost half.
Okay.
That's another good point for act two fifty.
And, and you've got a little drainage. Thing on the other side of the concrete?
Yeah, there's an exist, uh, there's a, a basin here, um, that we're maintaining. We're kind of maintaining all the existing. Uh, we're maintaining the, the existing grades throughout as well. Um, so a lot of it will be. Probably just milling, but there is a full depth limit that we'll have, um, which is, uh. Um, it's about half an acre or so. Um, but yeah, we mean, the reason for that is because we are maintaining the existing stormwater and we needed to drain to that. Um, so we provided a little swell there.
Is this part of the? The whole drainage thing that comes down that?
It all, it all ends up in that stormwater on. Finished project with us in the state, but I don't see, because they're, they're actually changing the impervious. By, we could say ten thousand square feet, um, they're, they're gonna. Lessen the problem.
They're gonna keep.
And, and, and they're making the buildings smother, so there, there's a number of things there where you're gonna have a whole lot less stormwater. The law should be favorable to anybody looking.
They also mentioned they're installing a water pump.
It's a good idea to me. And I believe that site already has water and sewer. So, so you don't really, um, the only thing that, um, we would need would be the. Usage at some point, which we figure that would be, shouldn't be much different and might be less.
Existing permit on the property and it looks like the flows might be reduced by four or five hundred gallons. Okay.
Alright.
Estimated completion date?
Gonna buy gifts.
Do, do you have a timeframe when you'd like to see this project?
I believe they, they wanna, they wanna get everything done by, the permitting wise by spring and if we can start in the summer, um, that'd be ideal.
I'm always looking for tax revenue for the town of Rose.
I mean, this is, this is a. And I don't mean to. Delittle the, or complain about, but the location of the other coffee shop in the area. Is in a very poor area, given the traffic and the intersection. This is a much better area to get traffic in than other places. You know, they didn't have much trouble there when they were arresting, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you know, you won't get any. Hard, hard times from AOT or any of those other things. I know everybody wants to. You're not changing that, but it's the number of vehicles and stuff that they do. You know how they all get, well, well, it's easy, you know, we're gonna have an increase of traffic. There might be one more car in the center. We're gonna have to jump through her. I get very upset with some of the things.
Joe, it does have the very typical problem that all US Route seven has.
Yeah.
No traffic control signals.
Right.
For southbound traffic, they're gonna have to cross that lane.
Right.
So have you done your traffic studies? Are you, what are you adding there?
We are, we are working on it currently. We got some quick numbers for this meeting tonight. Um, so. In the peak hour for the, uh, AM and the Saturday, it's about eighty entering, eighty out, which is one point two five. Cars per minute. Um, obviously, that's the peak hour dwindles. Uh, but for the new trips on the, on the network, because a lot of those trips are pass, pass-by trips. Um, you're about twenty new trips on the, on the network. And I believe the network's like almost twelve hundred right now, ADT or some, I, I forget, but.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, so it's very minimal new trips added.
I just, you know, I just think of the hurdles that you guys have to go through to open a business that. I, I don't find them to be.
So, and there's a, there's a middle turning lane. So I'm, I'm thinking people, people coming out and turning, um, south would be the, the tricky movement.
Well, one thing that Nicole recommended, because she's currently reviewing our plans as well, um, is to, since we, that width is thirty-five feet. Um, to provide maybe a dual right out and right, um, left out, which we have no problem doing and that will. Right now, we did the calculation is, is about two, for the peak hour, there's about two cars that will be backed up. Um, but if you obviously split the lane, it's one and one and so, which is not bad. Um, I've seen sites with the coffee shops that have a queue of, you know, three hundred feet. Uh, in, inside the site, uh, so this one actually worked pretty well and it'll work even better with the, the dual lane.
It's turning left out of there and going south on seven. Cause you gotta grasp two lanes of traffic and get into time.
But we're. I was just remembering what happened with, um, Kentucky Fried Chicken.
But it looked, it looks like you have a whole lot more internal space to line pairs up for the drive-through.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a Chick-fil-A in town?
No.
Wait, wait for that. Wait for that.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so this is a, um, just an informational meeting.
Congratulations and, uh, good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Have, have a good night.
It's the same document that we've signed in the past. He has seen it and he's like, hey, that's pretty neat. So, um. It's the same contact information. Well, it's Dave's content information now, but he's primary, I'm secondary for both requesting and, and providing. Uh. He's got it. He's got a copy of it. He's good with it and.
Question's been made to accept the mutual aid. Works Department. Motion's been made to accept the mutual aid, Works Department.
Yes.
To participate, okay. And adopt this is our. Session. Any questions? Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. While you're doing that, uh, reminder for scholarships for high school seniors, the applications are out there. Uh, there's a link on our Facebook page, there is a link on our website, uh, the schools have been notified, we have received one already. Uh, so, uh, they're out there and the due date is April 28th by noon, so still gotta, still got some time to go. Uh, but they're out there ready to go.
Do we know when school vacations? Okay, I'm, I'm hoping that that is after the kids come back from school vacation. Okay. Thank you.
I, on your desk is a couple of things for you. Uh, there is a, uh, quote from KD Associates. They're a company out of South Burlington who came down to look downstairs, they do asbestos and lead testing. Uh, and they have given us a quote of $1,650 to do the testing downstairs. Um, I've conducted a few different companies and, and these were the guys that people said to call. Yeah. This is, th- th- this, this is actually a lot less than I was, thought it was gonna be, so, yeah, we're, we're, this, this, we're, we're good. That, that'd be great, I mean, th- this, this'll actually help us move along a little faster, so.
Okay, second.
Second. The quote from Ken. Favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Uh, I have had a couple meetings with various vendors and organizations on short-term rental identification services, so there's the prevailing company which Killington uses. Uh, they are very good and very expensive and he, we, we came to agree, we, we both agreed that their services at roughly $27,000 a year are more than we would probably want and need, since our intention would be to have our fees cover the cost, we'd have to basically triple what we're anticipating to cover it, so we said that's, that's not gonna be a good fit. Here, referred me to another company who, uh, I met with, who, uh, is, is really good. Uh, they, I do have a quote from them, but I'm, I'm trying to get a meeting with another company so I can get other ones, at least I get a third one. Uh, they identified 30, uh, short-term rental properties in town based upon a lot of the websites out there, I identified 18 based upon one. Uh, so, and I knew there were gonna be more, so they quoted us based upon the 30 they found, so it's, it'll be $3,000 for a, a one-year contract. Um, and they, so it's annual renewal and the renewal is based upon the number they find or the number they're managing. So, uh, it could go up, it could go down, but that's, that's their initial quote, which actually is not really that bad and our proposed fee schedule in the ordinance would, would cover that cost completely. Uh, and they, um, they can help with sending notices, if they find a property that's not in compliance, we can actually like, they can, they can send notices on our behalf. It's, it kind of works out, they do templates, it's really kind of nice. Uh, and they check, uh, once a week, they're, they're checking for updates for property, so that was, the question I had was, we're only paying 3,000, how often are you checking? He's like, every week, so that's, that was really good, so, um, I've got the quote.
How long is it good for? Cuz we don't have.
Like 30 days, but, but, but I, well, we, we don't, but I mean, I, I don't think there's a question that we're probably gonna get there. Uh, but this, like, if we, if we brought them on, it would give them time to get and we, by the time the ordinance became effective, we could have our list of people that we need to go after to make sure they're compliant, so that could be a help, but we're not there yet, so. Uh, so I wanna, I, I'm trying to get a, a meeting within the, there, there's not a lot that do this. Uh, most of them are, wanna do this as well as all the other things that go along with it, this is a company that will just offer us this service, so I'm looking for another one that will offer us just this, just the identification part of it, because with 30, we can manage that, or I can manage that right now.
How many other towns use this particular?
Uh, there's a couple and there's only, there's only a ha, about a half dozen towns in the state that actually are using these, so uh, they will partner with, um, Ludlow and Chester, I think, and I've left a message with both their towns, but I haven't heard back from them yet. The other company works with Killington and Burlington, but like I said, i- it's, the, Killington has like 700, which it absolutely is appropriate, but it, it's just too, it's, it's a fantastic service, it's just way more than we need and, and it would just be, it'd be over-management of it, so.
What one is Rollins?
Uh, the city has, um, the, the other company, the, the more expensive one as well, so, yeah, they do, so. That's fine, so, uh, still working on that, uh, the planning commission is gonna, is gonna talk about the short-term rental ordinance again, uh, Thursday night. Um, it's in pretty good shape, like, we, 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 we don't have a lot of comments, but we're gonna, we're gonna wait till kind of the April 20th public meeting to let people get a chance to take a look at it and uh, both Barbara and I are going, parts of our circle article will address the, we'll, we'll advertise that meeting, so. So it's coming along, um, I gave copies of it, it's, it changed a little bit since, since then, but not, not a lot, we, we clarified a couple things, just streamlined a couple things, but it's, it's pretty, pretty good. I has not gone to Kevin. It did go to Kevin, just for some, just from references and he, some of our statutes were, were good, so we're, we're, we're in pretty good shape with that, so. Uh, the VLCT Safety Grant is available, uh, it's, uh, active now. Uh, this year, the maximum is $7,500, been 10,000 years past, but it's 7, 7,500, 7,500 this year. Uh, but it is a hundred percent reimbursement. Dave, uh, was talking earlier, he is, uh, in the market for a sewer inspection camera, which is one of the things that is covered under the grant, so. Um, I've sent it out, I sent it out to all the department heads and he's the only one that said anything so far, so.
When's the deadline?
It's like October or until the money's gone.
Right.
So, we always, we always try to be in April, um, so Dave's gonna get me a quote for that and, uh, we'll be able to move, move forward, so that's, we, we've done that every year and we've, we've done very well with that, so, yeah, we've, we've, we pretty much maxed it out every year, so, um, I'll attend to this year also. Um, alright, um, there was a letter you have on the, on the desk there, um, not really, not really much.
To express a little concern over this. If, if the board would wish to send this to Marty, then that would be fine. But our policy and the policy of any public body is not to acknowledge anonymous letters from anybody. I mean, if you don't have the pride in what you're saying to identify yourself, then you don't exist. And in spite of what's said in the letter, I have no confidence when there's no name on it.
Yeah, there's no information.
And I don't think the board should be dealing with anonymous letters, period.
Hey, I can understand this person wanting to be anonymous. If they wanna keep their training as an EMT, their training has to be done through regional, so they would not want their name on that.
Well, I, we're receiving, this is an anonymous letter, it deals with the regional ambulance service. Um, we're gonna receive it on the record and we're gonna pass it to Marty Wasserman, who is our, um, rep to the regional ambulance service and so he.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Also, okay.
Um, that's all I got.
Um, oh, okay, questions of. Let's see, so, I was just looking under, um, well, update on select board project list, we're gonna reactivate that, it hasn't gone away, but um, committees, as you're working and deciding what your work plan is gonna be, just keep that little thing in mind and we'll start putting things back up there.
Yep.
Taking, yeah, okay, well, we talked about several of the things anyway, so. And, oh, the transfer station toilet, transfer station committee.
Matt.
Matt.
So, I'll, I'll give you some background.
Well, no. The city water line goes.
There are 20 inch mains that go right through the property.
Yeah.
And a number of years ago, our fellow that was working with us, we went up there and I dug two vessels. I dug one on the north side and and the problem with putting a septic up there is you gotta be so many feet away from those mains and I'm not sure how we're gonna do it, but it would be nice.
Can we take it off the list?
No, I think it needs to be done, because you can't have a building like that, that's open to the public with no, there's water there, we've just gotta figure out where we're gonna go with it and we need to get somebody a little more, um, the fellow that we were working with was getting close to being done as, doing that stuff in the entire, and so, um, I'm not sure who we would get, Bill, do we, that would come up and help us design a system? He had a plan to put a porta potty out there and, and I'm, and that's, that's a Band-Aid on a severed.
Okay, well, we have a transfer station.
You and Matt, meet with Larry, um, and, and Bill, and, and I think what you need is you need to get a design person that does septic systems, go up and look at the property. The, the building already has the hole for the sleeve for a pipe to come out, they just never planned on going anywhere with it.
And we have composting toilet there for a while and under.
Yeah, and you need a step ladder to get up on it, and now they've got a really nice little storeroom there that I'm not sure he wants to give up.
Well, I know he doesn't wanna give it up.
But, but that, that facility should have.
The best thing to do is go to a 2,000 gallon holding, holding tank and.
That, that, that probably would be a good suggestion, nobody, nobody else, it's not like a lot of people are gonna use it. You know, and right now, those fellows
don't.
Have to walk down to the.
Okay, thank you.
It's a long walk or drive, so I think that we should have.
Or go where the unleashed dogs are.
Oh, no, not getting into that, okay, thank you, so anyway, keep in mind your select board project list.
Best thing to do, put a float on it, alarm comes on, you pump it.
Okay, um, public safety building update, we got, and, uh, we did our MS4 annual report. Um, we've talked about the project list, is there any other new business? Wait a minute, it seems to me I have one other thing. Anybody else got anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, have a good evening, folks.